All right, our next session, the budget will begin now. We will have Ms. Kristen Michael and Ms. Alice Wiggington and, um, look at me looking at you. I can't even, I'm like, brain dead. And Ms. Susan Quinn.
If I could just start this off, as you know, it's week number two, and I told you in the Bray Bran briefing on Friday, you're going to get one pagers moving forward on our presentation. So this is the one pager for this next topic. There's other slides, there's answers to your questions, but all of the options that we've researched for you are right here on one page, and this is what staff's going to start with. We know the conversation can go in different ways and different manners, but we thought this would be a great way to help get to the, what are they ask or what's before the board to make decisions about. So I want to appreciate their hard work in making that format happen in just a short period of time.
Thank you, Dr. Bray Bran. Ms. Michael.
So, good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me today. The presentation that's posted today has multiple options for addressing compensation for those employees who didn't receive a salary increase as a result of the decisions in the FY18 budget. So as you can see behind me, slide two is a summary chart that I'm going to talk through. But before I go through that chart, I just wanted to give a few contextual pieces that I hope will help as we go through this chart. So if we look at our FY18 budget with the compensation adjustments in that budget, in terms of increases to people's pay, 94% of teachers, 97% of Schedule H, which were bus drivers, bus attendants, and food service workers, 89% of classroom instructional support, and 87% of our Unified Scale employees received a step increase. So as we look and walk through our budget decisions, when we look in FY18, we implemented the new teacher and the new classroom assistant salary scale. So with the scale design, each of the pay lanes is within 95 to 105% of the market average, and they target faster career earnings, which was key feedback that we received from our employees via the survey and the focus groups. So when we look at the proposed new scales that were implemented, those new scales, when we had employee salaries that were above the top or above the maximum of that new lane, those employees' salaries were held at the FY17 level. So as we go through this chart, those are the employees that are using the term grandfathered. So grandfathered means that your FY17 salary was above the top of the FY18 salary scale, and therefore you were grandfathered or held at your FY17 salary. So when we look at our employees overall, who didn't receive an increase in their pay as a result of the FY18 budget, there were just over, just under 2,800 employees who didn't receive an increase in their pay. So when we look at who those teachers are, 392 teachers were teachers who had a master's degree or a doctorate degree, whose placement on the scale either provided them with less than a 1% increase due to the prior scales holding steps. And then we have 376 teachers that were on longevity, so they were already at the maximum salary level for their education level. So when people are at the maximum salary level, a step increase doesn't provide them with an increase in pay because there are no additional steps for them to go to. But when the board grants a market scale adjustment, that market scale adjustment moves the whole scale, and then those employees' pay increases based on that market scale adjustment. Then the last group of employees are the employees that were grandfathered. On the teacher's salary scales on the BA lanes, there were 461 people in that category. In terms of the classroom assistant or classroom instructional support scale, we had 195 employees on that scale that were already at the maximum, and then there were 155 employees on that scale that were also grandfathered because their salary was above the top of the new scale that was implemented. In terms of Schedule H, we have 88 bus drivers and food service attendants that are on that maximum longevity. There was no grandfathering impact based on that new scale. And then lastly, when we look at our unified scale, we have 311 employees that are currently on a hold step and 804 employees at the maximum salary for their position. When we implement new unified scales, those employees could also be potentially impacted by grandfathering when those new salary scales are put into place. So when we go through this chart, this chart addresses the follow-on motion that was part of the FY18 approved budget adoption, which stated that we would provide bonus options in terms of addressing employee compensation for employees who didn't receive an increase based on the FY18 salary scale. Right? So again, those groups of people who didn't see an increase in pay were people grandfathered, right, held at their FY17 salary because it's below the new FY, or above the FY18 scales, employees at longevity or the maximum salary, and then employees that are on hold steps. All of our old scale designs included hold steps, where you would sit a particular salary for a number of years before moving to the next. So those are the categories. So you'll see at the top of this chart, we have our bonus options first. We've provided a description of each of those, which that's in the column, the light blue shaded column to the left. Then you'll see we've provided a cost impact for both FY18, that's our funding that we're using from year end, our FY19 budget development, and then we have long-term costs that we'll walk through for each of these options. So when we look at option A, option A would provide a 1% bonus to all employees who didn't receive a salary increase as a result of the FY18 budget. So that would be a 1% adjustment for any of those employees that are grandfathered on longevity or on a hold step. Now bonuses are non-recurring, and they also don't impact either retirement costs or retirement benefits. So the cost to do that for all of those 2,800 employees is 2.5 million, which you can see in the FY18 cost box. Since a bonus is one-time and not recurring, right, there's no additional cost as we move forward, either in terms of developing our FY19 budget or a long-term cost. Make sense? I'm okay to keep going? Okay. Option B, separate from option A, option B provides a $1,000 bonus for employees who are grandfathered on longevity or on a hold step. A set dollar amount, when we look at that as compared to a percentage bonus, a set dollar amount would provide a lower, for our lower-paid employees, a higher benefit, right? So they would, lower-paid employees would get a higher bonus from a $1,000 set amount as a percentage of their total pay than if we went with option A. Now, option A is most similar to our market scale adjustment, right? So if we were to have provided a market scale adjustment, that likely would have been that 1% included in option A. So then when we move to option C, we have two different variants of option C, option C1 and option C2. So in option C1, we would provide a bonus equal to the value of one step on the FY17 salary scale to our employees who were grandfathered as a result of the new scale design, so that would impact both teachers and classroom instructional assistants. Right? In this option, then, in option C1, the remaining employees who are either on longevity or hold would receive a 1% bonus. So that total cost is 3 million. So when we look at that total cost as a reference point of that $3 million, 1.1 is the cost for our grandfathered teachers. So then in option C2, again, we would provide a bonus equal to the value of one step on the FY17 salary scale to our grandfathered employees, but the employees on longevity and hold would instead receive a $1,000 bonus, and that's 3.3 million. So our current year-end budget proposal that we had presented last Thursday evening did have placeholder funding in it of 3.3 million. So that would be sufficient funding to cover any of these bonus options. Okay? So the second half of the chart, the bottom half of the chart, has options in terms of addressing step. We received many questions from school board members, so these reflect some of that feedback that we've received. So the step options are options D, E, and F. As we were developing the options for step, some of the things that we really considered as we were working through them is would this option impact only those that are currently grandfathered this one year? Or would it include employees that are on the steps leading up to being grandfathered? Right? So would it include someone who's currently on the bachelor's degree step 18, right, who is going to step to step 19 on this current year, but what about them the next year? We also considered if the options are one-time, temporary, permanent. And then we also went back and reviewed all of the methodology that we used when developing the teacher salary scales, right? And then we looked at, as we look at all of these different options, applying them not only to the teacher scale, but also to the classroom instructional assistance scale, and then using the same approach to the unified scale when those are fully implemented. So I'll first start with option D. Option D is to provide a one-year step sunset. So in this case, one additional step would be provided for the employees that are grandfathered this year. So those on step 19 and higher on the BA lanes of the teacher scale would get one step, right? So this would give them a transition year as we transition to the new scales. So again, this step would only be available to those that are grandfathered in this current FY18 budget, and we wouldn't permanently make this change moving forward. So when we look at this option, in this case, the board could then also decide for the employees that are on a hold step or longevity step, just like we had options C1 and C2, the board could elect either to do a 1% or a $1,000 bonus or some other amount to the employees on holds or longevities in combination with this. So if we look at the cost for this one-year sunset, it would be 1.1 for the bonus cost plus there's an additional $200,000, which is the cost of the benefits impact for that additional step. So 1.3 million in total. So what that is, is it's 0.2 million more than the cost would have been if we had just done a bonus. So when we look at FY19, in FY19, we would need to add an additional 1.3 million to our budget development as we develop the FY19 cost, because we're funding this cost with one-time money in FY18, but those employees' salaries would remain at that level for FY19, so we would need to build that recurring funding into the base, right? So that's the 1.3 million in the FY19 column, right? And since we're only doing it for one year only, there's no incremental cost, no additional cost as we move forward. Option F is a step sunset, or option E, excuse me, is a step sunset. So in this case, the steps on the bachelor's lanes that were eliminated would remain available to employees that are currently on steps 15 and above. Right? So because our employees on the BA lanes that are lower steps, so steps below 15, have more significantly benefited from the rapid career earnings from us implementing the new teacher salary scales, in this option, we applied it to everyone currently on steps 15 and above. So for those employees, in this case, they would have the ability to step through all of the steps that were available on the FY17 scale, right? So that would help those nearest the top of the scale with their overall career earnings. So and again, we would apply the same option to all of our other scales, and then the board could make an election regarding our employees on a hold step or longevity. So when we look at a cost for option E, again, the first year, it's that 1.1 for the bonus cost plus the 0.2 million for benefits, so just like option D. But in this case, because we're continuing it forward, allowing those employees to continue to step through all the rest of the steps on the salary scale, when we get to FY19, we would need to add the 1.3 million, plus we would need to add another incremental cost of $1 million in FY19. So we would have to add 2.3 million to our budget for FY19. So then as we look at the out-years, when we get to FY20, our base is now 2.3 million higher, and we would continue to need to add that incremental cost of approximately $1 million each year until this is sunset, right? So it would result in significant cost over time. Option F would be to make a permanent scale change. In that case, the cost would actually be less than the bonus. It would be that 1.1 million bonus cost for teachers, less 700,000, right? And that's because when you look at our old salary scales, right, the steps at the top of the scale had a greater percentage value. And when we implemented our new salary scales to get more rapid career earnings, we put much greater steps earlier in the scale, and the steps at the top of the scale are now at 1%. So a new step to mirror all of the other salary scales and to be consistent with the top of the scale would be added at 1%. So because that's a lower step value than was on the scale previously, this would cost less. So the first year cost. So then when we look at FY19, we have that 0.4 million cost, plus we would need to add that second-year incremental cost of another 0.4 million, right? That would be required for FY19. So then when we get to FY20, we have to remember our base would be 0.8 million higher, plus we would have that additional 0.4 million that would be added to the base each year, right? In this case, the change would be permanent, right? So we would always see that ongoing cumulative cost as the top of the scale would now be higher. And when we look at option F, the other thing to consider in terms of option F is by adding an additional step, we would be adding higher career cumulative earnings to the top of the scale, potentially making those bachelor's degree lanes have higher career earnings than our other salary scale lanes, right? So if you add one step, that would add approximately 1% to that comparison. So as we're comparing career earnings, that could potentially make those bachelor's degree lanes out of alignment, both with the market and with all the other lanes of our salary scale. So one last thing I didn't mention is when we look at option E, as we work through that significant cost, right, that cost would end when our sunsetting period ended, but looking at our employees currently on step 15, right, as they work through all the rest of those lanes, we previously had 19 steps, or 23 steps on our bachelor's and bachelor's plus 15, and more steps on our BA plus 30 lane. So it would take us approximately eight to 12 years to work through that cost.
Me? Just I, okay. All right. Thank, anybody else? Ms. Quinn, Ms. Wiggington, any other comments you'd like to make? Okay. All right, we're ready for questions. I'm going to start with Ms. Evans.
Oh, thank you very much for outlining these different options for us. I, you know, I, when I went back and looked at the scales side by side, I, we had a reason for changing the scales, and we did have a very involved compensation study. At the same time, it does seem to me that these scales are pretty abrupt, pretty abrupt change. So I am, I had a couple of questions about the options for step. I do think we have to do something for these employees. These are some of our longest-term veteran employees who have, are, you know, wonderful employees, and we need to treat them well. So whether we go for a bonus or a change in the step, I'm going to think long and hard about that, but with the option E, the step sunset, I realize that takes, that's the one that takes the longest time to get to the end of, to actually get to where we would go to the current, that would take, that's the one that takes eight to 12.
Yeah, it's eight to 11 years.
Or eight to 11 years.
But when we look at the permanent option, it would change it forever. So when we look at option F, for even employees that we're just hiring now coming into the system, we would be permanently adding one or more steps to those scales. So that would go on forever and ever until the board made more salary scale changes.
So the, so the estimate that you have here is for one step being added?
Correct. The estimate here is for one step, we're assuming one step on each of the BA lanes.
I see. Okay. So that would be taking it up from 19 to 20 and just doing that permanently. So the first-year cost would be 0.4, just correct? I see you say 1.1 bonus less 0.7, you, you know, do the math on that, it's.
Correct. You're absolutely, it's 0.4.
And is that the case that for each step we added, it would be equal or not? Is that too?
I think equal is okay in terms of estimating, right? There are currently a different number of people on each step, you know, as we work through. But I think that's a good way to estimate based on how many are currently there. With more rapid career earnings over time, right? And when you look at our most recent hires, 63% of our employees, I believe, are coming into the system with a master's degree already, right? So over time, depending on if we saw fewer people reaching the top of that scale, you know, that, that cost should, could shift, but I do feel that that's a good estimate.
Okay.
So it would add a step 20 to the BA and also the BA plus 15 lane, but it would also add a step to the BA plus 30 lane.
Okay.
Right? That previous scale did have hold steps. In the future, right, we are eliminating that BA plus 30 lane.
Okay.
Right? When the scale is fully implemented to make it match the BA plus 15 lane.
So I do, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add one additional comment on a permanent change to the scale. It will misalign the bachelor's lane. It's going to end up being greater if you add additional steps permanently outside of our 95 to 105% range. So it would not be our recommendation to continue to permanently add steps to the BA lanes. We have it on here as, you know, an option, but it would not be a preferable option because we are trying to stay within the 95 to 105% of the market value or the market average of the career earnings. So right now, you have your masters, your masters 30, PhD, all within that 95 to 105%.
And I know I had asked a question about it as well, so that's.
That's why we were, we did go ahead and include it, but that would be some additional comments related to the permanent change to the scale.
So I do think we need to get to our, the scale that we approved at some point. My question is, when and how? And is there a better way of getting to that scale? The option E then is, is that basically just going back to the old scale or, no, you sunset it out on that one?
Correct. So for people on the BA lanes currently steps 15 and above, it would in fact be having them stay on that old scale.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Right? But for any new employees, they would be on the new scale, or any employees that are currently below step 15.
For those employees, steps 19 and above will use the same dollar value as the FY17 scale. If you are currently on step 15 of the bachelor's lane, you would move to the step 15 of the new scale. And then once you reach your 19, step 19, then you would go back and get grandfathered into the 17th scale until you reach step 23, which is our FY17 scale.
So with the, the investment that we did this year in the mid-career salaries, that was, where, where does that end? Where does, what step does that end on? Is that, does it end on 15 or does it end higher?
It actually does benefit all the steps. The reason why we selected step 15 is anybody that would have been on step 13 two years ago, their increase was probably minimal compared to those teachers that are on the mid-career earnings. And that, and that's some of the things that we had considered, and that's why in step E, option E, we have, we are recommending that those teachers that are currently on step 15, even though they still have step 16, 17, 18, and 19 to go, that we would continue to grandfather them into 20, 21, 22, and 23.
Right.
Because what they saw in the last two years of teacher investments was smaller than some of the other teachers that were at the beginning of the scale or the mid-career.
Right. And so I, I do think that because we have made this investment and we're going to continue a significant investment in the mid-career scales, I, I don't think that, that a permanent change is where we would want to go, but a shorter-term change is something that I, I do want to look at to, to help us get over the, so we're, we're fair to our, our long-term employees, our long-term teachers in particular. I do think you made the point, and I'm going to reiterate, that all of our teachers and all of our employees are going to be eligible for MSAs. I think that, you know, the cost of living increases. I, I think there was a misunderstanding by, by some folks from, based on the emails that we have gotten, that there were some who seemed to think that they were not going to be eligible for future cost of living increases. And I do think we need to be sure and get the word out that even if you're over whatever the new scale is, that you are eligible for those cost of living increases. I, I think that would be terribly unfair not to have them be eligible for that. So I'm still thinking about what my own advocacy is going to be, but I, this, this gives us significant information to go on. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Palchek.
I'd like to go backwards a little bit. Frankly, I, I was hoping, because it was one of my early questions when this initially came up, for a distribution slide that showed how many in what year. And, you know, that's one of the things I'd asked for. So if you would go back, as I understand it, we have three categories. Grandfathered, held slash longevity step, and had reached the maximum, had already capped out. Is that correct?
Yes, and in one of the backup slides, we did provide the number of employees in each of those categories.
Do you have, can you pull that up?
Yes, it would be slide six.
Ladies, if we could go to slide six, please. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So this, this is where, this is where the rubber meets the road. So on Thursday night, Ms. Michael, when I asked you how many teachers were affected in the BA lane issue, and you said 461, that's 461, but only in one category, and that's 461 this year, correct? This coming budget year.
Correct. That's 461 employees who are grandfathered for FY18. Correct.
Okay. So the universe of affected employees at this time across all of the different categories is 2,782?
So the 2,782 employees were employees who didn't see an increase in their pay as a result of the FY18 budget. So for example, employees that are on longevity or employees that had previously already reached the maximum salary for their job, either their grade, right, or else their step in their lane if they're a teacher. So maybe you were already at the maximum pay for your job as a office assistant.
So the BA specific issue, the BA versus masters, specific issue only applies to the 461?
Correct. The current top of the scale for master's degree is higher on the masters and PhD lanes, all of them, than the scale was in FY17. So no one is grandfathered on those lanes.
What, what, what is the situation for the 392 who are in the hold?
So when we look at our old salary scale, our old salary scale had hold steps near the top. So you would get to a specific step, and then you would hold there for two years before you get your next step.
So the, so the situation for them was, they had the potential to move to a future step in our old salary scale?
They do, and they still do in the new scale.
Okay. So this is, this is, this is where I'm headed. Because the 195 longevity, classroom instructional support, and the 155 grandfathered, those are not affected by the BA. That's just the new salary scale, correct?
Correct. The 461 and the 155 are solely the impact of the new salary scales in terms of, right?
Right. And same for Schedule H and same for unified.
Correct. So the reason you see zero for unified is we haven't implemented the new unified scales yet. When we implement the new unified scales, we do expect that they will, will have people in this same place.
Okay. So now can we please go back to the previous slide? So I appreciate the, this slide, however, what I would have appreciated more is the, the number of people, you know, that are affected by each of these choices. Because now, now you understand the scale of the scale. And I'm inclined for there not to be a cookie cutter approach to my colleagues, that there not be one answer. Because I think it's a different situation, and I, and I said it on Thursday night, it's one thing, Dr. Bray Bran, from my, from my perspective, to have for a young teacher coming in, or a new teacher, because she could be a new teacher and not be a young teacher. To, to, uh, to have had a tuition reimbursement plan in place that was partial tuition reimbursement that was put out there that said, hey, look, if you go get your masters, um, and oh, by the way, we'll, we'll help you out with that tuition, um, you, you have the potential to benefit yourself with a higher set of earnings. And at some point in their career, they, you know, either got married and had children or life got busy or, you know, whatever, um, and they hadn't had a chance to get it. And then we took the, the tuition reimbursement away. Okay, well, they took, but they didn't, they didn't avail themselves of the opportunity, for whatever reason, to get the masters. So they didn't pursue, you know, the, the golden egg. That is entirely different to me than taking away first the tuition reimbursement and then later, it's, to me, like, clubbing them over the head. It's punishing them because they didn't make that choice earlier on to get the masters. That's a, that is a double cut. Is not only did we take the tuition reimbursement away and you don't have the opportunity to improve your, you know, your situation, now, because you didn't do it, we're gonna punish you. That's, uh, that's the most untenable part of all of this to me. So could we not, Ms. Quinn and Ms. Michael, could we not for, I'm, I'm sorry to go back and forth, but it's a little bit difficult. Can we bring back up the slide six? Could we not have one solution for the, the twelve twenty-nine? And you could decide how you want to do this. But I would, I would posit that there is one solution for the twelve twenty-nine, which is a long-term sunset. And I don't know how long it would take to sunset twelve hundred and twenty-nine, to effectively, what I would say, grandfather the whole twelve twenty-nine, have a grandfathered approach for the whole twelve, twelve twenty-nine, which is either move them, because I don't know, I, I mean, th- these are gonna be employees in, in that first, in that first row that are gonna be eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-four-year employees, correct?
That's correct, but I think we, we are saying the same thing. The grandfather folks will still be four hundred and sixty-one. People that are on longevity are people that are already at step twenty-three on the bachelor's lane. They have already reached the maximum of FY seventeen. So I think to your point, when we said we're gonna go ahead and have one solution for the teacher line, what we're showing on the option slide is anybody who's on hold in longevity, because I think the, um, the intent of the bonus option was because we didn't do a market scale adjustment for FY eighteen, anybody who didn't see any adjustment to their salary would see a bonus option. So the way it's costed, it includes bonuses for those that are on hold or longevity.
So anybody at longevity is in step twenty-three and they knew they were never gonna exceed twenty-three again.
Correct.
But not necessarily the case for hold.
But we apply that same logic, so if you're.
Yeah, but they could be, could, could they be at step twenty and, and, and long, and, and, uh, step twenty in hold such that they could have eventually gotten multiple steps in the future?
Employees on this slide that are reflected on a hold count, they still have future steps that they will step to. Right? The only reason we counted them on this slide is when you're on a hold step, you get credit for sitting on the hold step. It counts as your waiting time, but they didn't receive an increase in pay because we didn't grant a market scale adjustment. But they still have future steps that they're going to step to.
Right. But we've, but we've capped it out.
No.
With the new salary scale?
No.
Not those employees in that category. So then the universe of people that we are talking about is four sixty-one. Okay. So, okay.
The teacher scale.
Okay. So, so I, I am, what I'm gonna, what I believe I'm gonna advocate for is, um, two solutions, a two-step solution. And I don't know how you price this, and I don't know how we're gonna talk about this. I'm sorry. Go back to the, go back to six, or two. Is a combination of take care of the people who we told, look, this is, this is, this is how you came in, and I don't think it was right. I don't think the decision was right. I, I, I mean, you, you, we can go back and put lipstick on a pig any way we want to on this, but to say that we had a path to a higher, um, salary if you got a masters, and now not only do you not get that, but now we're gonna freeze you where you are, is unacceptable to me.
So, so with what you're saying,
Mm-hmm.
if you were to say elect option D, right? That would add a point two million dollar increase to whatever of the two options that you picked in C one and C two, whether it's a thousand dollars for all of those other employees or one percent. That's how we did this costing to try to make it easy. So if you were to pick option D and you wanted everyone who's on a hold step or longevity to get a one percent.
MSA.
Bonus.
MSA. Hold on. See, see, this is why I'm saying I want a hybrid. And that, this is why I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea of a bonus. And, and, and how, and how do we alter for the other universe? Because I didn't talk about the other universe. For the four sixty-one, I basically, I'm looking at something maybe between E and F. Saying, look, we, we, we had a commitment to those people, and the fact that we didn't keep it up in the past for the past twenty years, that's not their fault. That's the board's fault.
So I agree, but the one point that I'll come back and say to you is when you talk about adding, if we don't do a bonus for our other employees that are on hold in longevity,
Oh.
again, will be if we just add a market scale adjustment to the top of all of our other scales, right? That cost is substantial and we didn't cost it, and it has long-term implications as we look at that market competitiveness.
Right.
Because in that case, if we're not going to give the bonus, say to our, you know, other employees that are on the maximum salary, whatever permanent increase you make to that salary, right? We'll adjust it as we compare to market.
I'm completely aware that we've gotten ourselves into this situation. Um, we have. So the other option would be, and I don't, well, I'm not, I'm, we don't need to rehash history. Uh, the other option would be for the balance of that twenty-seven hundred, you know, other than the four sixty-one, is, is there a way to do a version of E for them, just for the, that part where we build in a, um, bo, uh, uh, not a bonus, a, a, a one percent longevity, um, annually for them um, until we rid ourselves of that universe, until, until that universe is aged out, basically.
We will always have employees that are on longevity. Regardless of what the scale design is, employees will always get to the top.
Basically, what I'm looking at is there's, there's some, in the universe of employees that we have, at some point, and so, so what we did for ERFC, we, that what we struggled with as a board is where do you cut it off? Do you do it for new employees? Do you do it for employees that aren't vested? Do you do it for employees, you know, who are, have ten years? But, you know, I, I mean, at some point, and so what I'm looking at is there is some point at which we can say, okay, we're not gonna expand the universe past a certain point. Um, and, and that we're gonna have to define whatever we're gonna fix now. We can't, we can't do everything for, somebody is gonna be unhappy. But it doesn't mean you do nothing. It's not all or nothing. It's a combination of how do you address, um, the maximum number of people without doing the division harm? And are we able to, um, and this would be a hard nut for the board to come up with, do you draw the line at, you know, whoever is in that universe now? And if somebody is on step eleven, you know, and they're gonna be a future, you know, oh, well, you know, that's, that's where it cuts off. You just say, look, we're gonna establish what the universe is, we're gonna fix what we can, and then we're gonna acknowledge that in future budgets, we're gonna have to commit more, more demonstrably to, to steps or more demonstrably to a step plus an MSA, that we're gonna have to fix things in the future.
Well, I think part of that, I just wanna say, that's me, Elizabeth. Um, option E kind of addresses what you're, what you're saying very much. So I just wanna throw that out there.
Correct. So in this case, an option E for our grandfathered employees, option E employees applies to any employees that are on step fifteen or higher. So if you're currently an employee on step fifteen, we would allow you to go to the top of the current scale, step nineteen, and then we would still add those temporary steps of twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three that would still be available to you. The reason we didn't expand it below step fifteen is we felt that the people below step fifteen have benefited substantially from the investments that we made in the new teacher's salary scale. So they've seen appreciable salary increases as a, as a result of the first forty million that we invested, and then the additional twenty-six point six that was added to the FY eighteen budget.
You say grandfathered, though, but are you, but what you really mean is the whole universe?
The universe is the grandfather folks, which is the four hundred and sixty-one.
But what happens to all the people that are on hold on, on E?
So if you're currently on a hold step in the past, or even if we had given a market scale or even in the past, right? If you were on a hold step, you just sat on the hold step without getting any value from step. You got credit from step.
My question, my question is not what happened in the past. What happens to all the people on hold under E?
If they're on hold, let's say, most of the holds are probably on BA thirty. They would continue to step because there will be additional steps. We're talking, the four hundred and sixty-one folks are folks that don't have an opportunity to step with their current FY eighteen scale. So if you're on hold.
Look, I appreciate the four hundred and sixty-one, but that, the other slide six has twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight hundred employees. So I don't want the, th- there's a major problem with the four sixty-one, and I've already defined that. But I don't wanna not talk about the other twenty-three hundred employees.
And, and we don't think they're going to be adversely impacted with the new scale design if you're on hold, because you still have additional steps. So if the board approves another step or increase for twenty nineteen, those employees are gonna have an opportunity to increase their salary because there are additional steps. It's just that they did not see an increase in FY eighteen because we did not do a market scale adjustment for any of the salary scales. But they will still have an opportunity to increase their salaries, um, in the future because there are additional steps.
And how much did the health insurance go up?
This past year?
For this next year?
Oh, for FY eighteen? So first six months is still using the rate from F, this entire calendar year. And then FY eighteen, we're still working through the premium increases for calendar year twenty eighteen.
But there're gonna be increases?
There will be slight increases, yes.
So, so if, so for everyone on hold and everyone on longevity, basically, they're gonna wind up with less take on pay?
That's why we're offering, in the spirit of the follow-on motion, a bonus for those employees. Because they did not see an increase in twenty eighteen, the costing includes those employees on hold and longevity or the maximum of their salary scale to receive a bonus.
Well, I think we're gonna have to take some time and talk with the employee groups. Um, I still feel like there is a, a version, um, that is not quite F, but is an improvement on E, um, that is possible. But E basically from what's here is the most expensive.
Most expensive in the next eight to eleven years. Option F is a permanent increase, so those costs will continue to increase. Except option E, it could be upwards of eighty to ninety million dollars cumulative over that eight to eleven years. Because everyone will be stepping up until the twenty-three steps. Until we sunset, the cumulative cost is significant for option E. Option F, you have costs each year, incremental costs, but it's permanent.
Yeah, it's in perpetuity.
Yes.
So, um, I know it's gonna be painful, but, um, I'm, I'm more at the end of the advocacy, um, around E, uh, for my colleagues. And the, um, the conversation, I think, has got to rapidly, um, happen um, amongst us and with, uh, with employees on how, on how we get to a remedy.
Yes. Um, I wanna make sure that we, uh, the calendar, we have to have this done. We, we will make a decision on the twenty-seventh.
We were just side barring on that.
Say that to my colleagues. So, uh, you know, we can take straw manor. I, I'm just kind of looking at everybody's advocacy. But, you know, we, we do have an extra, more time to talk about this. Um, but today, I, I would like you to kind of, you know, verbalize your advocacy. But we will be voting on this, on the twenty-seventh because, um, the team has to have its budget in by July thirty.
It's not just the budget. We have to have the system updated in order to do our first payroll.
Okay.
And we don't have contracts out yet.
All right.
Pending this decision.
All right. So this decision definitely has a timeline for it. We do, we do. Thank you. I mean, I, I really appreciate what you all have worked on. Um, we have Ms. Palchek followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Um, I will ask a few clarifying questions to make sure we all know exactly what we're talking about. I know there are a lot of new, um, options before us, and I really appreciate it. Um, so I am, if I understand it correctly, also leaning toward a version of option E. What I want to understand about option E is that it's a step sunset for all employees currently on step fifteen or above who would, who would, um, have had increases in the, in the previous scale. And so what we would be doing is kind of like the, we, with ERFC, um, new, all incoming employees, twenty eighteen and later, will go on the new scale? No.
So all of our employees will be on the new scale, but for employees that are currently on step fifteen or higher, once they reach the top of the new scale, we would extend to them these temporary shadow steps that were based on the FY seventeen scale, allowing them to get to the top of the previous scale.
Okay. So it's basically a shadow scale only for employees entering step fifteen and above, correct? So not those who in twenty eighteen.
Already at step fifteen in FY seventeen. So they would be entering step sixteen in FY eighteen.
Okay. So it's one, those who twenty seventeen were fifteen and above. Um, also, uh, when we're talking about the hold step, from what I see on our scales, there's only one hold step that was five, six. Am I looking at this wrong? And that will be six, so step seven for next year? No.
No. So we used to, all of our old scale design included hold steps, right? And some of the feedback we got from our employees, it's, it's confusing. Um, in the years, we didn't have step, you know, then they didn't get credit. The hold steps were really confusing. Um, so part of our new scale design is eliminating those hold steps, so they won't exist on our future scales. So when we look at the teacher scale, until we get the new scale fully implemented, there's still hold steps on the masters and PhD lanes. And then we still have hold steps that exist on the Unified scale, right? But so far, on any of the new scales that are fully implemented, Schedule H and the Classroom Instructional Assistance, we've eliminated hold steps in their entirety. It gets employees to the maximum salary faster or earlier in their career. That was the goal of eliminating holds.
Okay. Sorry. So where are the hold steps currently?
For BA thirty lane, it's above step twenty-three. Actually, it's above step twenty-three for BA thirty, MA, MA thirty, and PhD. They all have hold steps.
So the longevity hold steps?
Yes. Those are the hold steps. You have to be on those longevity steps for two years before you could advance to the next longevity step.
Okay. So that's what we mean. And then does that also include that six, seven step? Is that, that's not considered? That's just when people enter. Okay. Never mind. Um, another question, when we're discussing bonus versus this MSA option, um, when calculating the, the FAS, the final. the FAS, the final average salary, does the bonus count in there and does the MSA count in there?
So bonuses do not count in the calculation of final average salary, right? They also don't count, again, because they're not that final average salary, they don't count towards retirement, but employees also don't pay their share of the retirement cost out of that bonus, right? When the board does provide a market scale adjustment, it moves the entire market, it does add to employees' base pay, it's retirement eligible, and then is included in that final average salary calculation.
Okay, and so for final average salary, it's only what's within a step and an MSA that actually counts toward that? No additional assignments or summer assignments, none of that counts?
Correct, it's only your base pay.
Only your base pay, okay. And I guess just a question regarding to what Ms. Schultz was mentioning, is it feasible to look at an option where there would be an MSA that would not change our scale permanently that would be able to be applied to a certain group? I think that's my understanding of what we're asking for, those people, rather than a bonus doing MSA only for that grandfathered longevity hold.
MSA would make it permanently, because then you've got people that are going to step into the maximum salary scale next year, right? So MSA is really a permanent change to top of that scale.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
Because each year, you're going to have people going into that long, the maximum scale, which is the top of the scale.
Okay, so the way you said, there's not a way to do that without permanently changing?
It's a permanent change.
It's a permanent.
Because I don't believe the board would grant a MSA for those folks going into longevity in 2018, but not for those folks going into longevity in 2019.
Okay, and I know we have absolutely no control over VRS, but ERFC, did the boards set the definition of, because I know in other states, you know, those kinds of things would count into final average salary, so this is an ERFC decision that if they chose to in the future, would be able to make the change? It might be a hypothetical.
I wouldn't recommend it, right? Overall, ERFC and VRS both look at employees' base salaries, it's consistent, right? It's good practice, so I think it would be very confusing if we were counting some types of supplemental pay in some systems and not others.
Okay.
Right, and long-term, obviously, there would be a cost to calculate and finding out final average salary using other types of one-time or supplementary pay in that calculation.
Right, okay, no, I understand. So things to think about, one final question, I know Ms. Schultz did bring up the question I was going to ask about healthcare. So my assumption is if we're able to do approximately 1% or $1,000 for grandfathered longevity and hold, do we have a sense, approximate, that the increase in healthcare costs and/or other benefit costs would be more than 1%?
And I think it's a little early for us to provide the board any specific information on exactly what we think the rates are going to be for plan year 18. We are working on that, and we're going to bring something to Dr. Brabran here in the near future to come back with that information, but we can't speculate.
So, right, but it would...
More than that.
Very substantial, because the healthcare costs are approximately what percentage of salary? I mean, okay, okay, so it would take a significant increase to come close to... Okay, I know my colleague...
That would be a tremendous increase.
Okay, so I know my colleagues have more questions. Right now, I'm leaning towards some area around option E, and just want to reiterate, or I guess clarify, I believe we're about $25 million in starting, that we were planning for 2019, sorry, budget?
Yes, the funding we were pushing forward to FY 19, recommended for beginning balance, is 24.1 million.
24.1, okay, so that is still currently what we're looking at, beginning balance?
Correct, so when you look at the options on this page, we had already included in our estimate, setting aside 3.3 million. So when you look at these options, option D and E would require an additional point two, option F would actually be a savings compared to the placeholder that we have in our year-end budget.
So the 1.1 is already included in the 3.3?
It's already included.
So it's just a 0.2 for 2018, and then for 2019, it would be...
For 2019, if we went with option E, right, we would need to add 2.3 million to our budget development as a cost for FY 19.
And then going forward, it's about 3.3 per year?
So going forward each year, we would add approximately another million as we work through the sunsetting process. So the base, right, would be 2.3 coming from FY 19, then we would add in 2020 another million, that makes your base 3.3 million. The next year, you would add another million, right? As long as you're, you know, funding it with recurrent funding.
For about 11 years, you said, you would be doing this?
Eight to 11 years.
Eight to 11 years, okay, thanks so much.
Ms. McLaughlin followed by Mr. McElveen.
I'm going to try and see how to tease this thing out. I don't know if anyone's ever had about five different necklace chains all mangled up in a jewelry box, but honestly, I feel a little bit like that's where we are right now, and how do you tangle them? Because we're dealing with a couple of different problems here today, and one of them that hasn't been mentioned yet is our substitute teacher pay rate, which, I mean, if anything, Dr. Brabran were to capture Groundhog Day, this whole thing with the bachelor teacher's salary scale lanes is a repeat of exactly what Dr. Garza brought us through with the substitute teacher pay rate, in that staff presented us and said, here's the average of substitute teacher pay in the region, so here's what we recommend we do to change the substitute teacher pay rate. After the board went with that guidance, approved it, then we had the retired teacher associations who did the additional digging and brought forward the information and said, yes, if you take all the regions together and you swirl it around, and that's your new color that tells you what your average rate is, that's fine, but we compete against the two largest school divisions, Loudon and Prince William, for where people decide, am I going to substitute teach today? And we were below them with our new rate. So one of the things that we talked about was then looking at Arlington, Alexandria, Loudon, and Prince William and saying, okay, if those are really where people are going to drive to substitute teach, what does the number look like then? So staff then brought us a new recommendation for substitute teacher pay rates, because our principals have been telling us, I can't get substitute teachers. I've got IAs and teachers telling me, when we can't fill it, either a teacher gives up a prep period, IAs get pulled out of a classroom. I mean, so regrettably, we don't have the conversation happening right now. But what I want to focus on in asking staff is, I appreciate that you all created the teacher-bachelor scale comparison chart, and when I look at it, when it shows Alexandria, Arlington, DC, Fairfax, Loudon, Montgomery, Prince George's, Prince William, if you look at the steps 1 through 30 for bachelor teachers in the area, what's interesting to me when I looked at it is Loudon County goes up to step 30 for a bachelor's degree, Prince William goes up to a step 30. If you're in Loudon County and you get to step 30 as a bachelor's teacher, your end earnings are at $94,000. If you go to Prince William, your end earnings are $102,000. What do we think's going to happen when Fairfax County stops at $77,000? Where do you think those teachers are going the next year? Why would they stay here when they can end up going and getting another $20,000 a year and more in their overall earnings? Now, some would say ERFC will keep them here, maybe that's the case. But what's concerning to me is that we, I feel like this information was not clear to the board. We have teachers in here that have been coming to our meetings, emailing us, because it wasn't clear to them. This board, before you arrived, Dr. Brabran, we spent, Ms. Michael, countless hours, can't even count up how many work sessions we had on ERFC changes that were nominal compared to what this is. We had no board deliberation at all, saying, this is what we're going to do, changing the rules of the game for any teacher who hits beyond step 19 with a bachelor's degree. And I'm even looking at this other chart that we got in the staff presentation that shows if you have bachelor's plus 30, you actually, we're robbing them of all the way going up to step 29. So we keep talking about step 23, but that's bachelor 15. So in fairness to my colleagues and everybody in this room, there's no way we're going to sort this out today. So now the question is, what do we sort out based on what staff needs to set the FY 18 budget, and what do we need to do to be fair to our employees? And one option I want my colleagues to know I'm considering is, I think we need to postpone the change in that FY 18 for one year for our bachelor teachers. And I think we're going to need to have deeper deliberation with Dr. Brabran and this board on what do the comparisons look like with the region, especially those that are neighboring jurisdictions. But this board has not deliberated what it means to change a salary scale promise that we gave to teachers so that they came in with a bachelor's, they made a family decision, do I go get a master's, pay for my master's, figure out how to do my master's while I'm raising a family? And so I think staff has done a good job at saying, well, we could do option F, maybe, no, not F, E, where we would sunset in, and that's a possibility. But I asked one of my colleagues sitting next to me, did I hear it would cost us 80 to 90 million or eight to nine?
So 80 to 90, when you add all of those costs up each year together, cumulative, so when you add each year's costs on top of each other, it will get to that 80 or 90 million, give or take how many people depart. So when we look at our FY 18 teacher salary scale and the investment we made, that 26.6 million, it applied to all of the lanes on the teacher's scale, so those mid-career salaries. So when we look at those BA lanes, the teachers on those lanes are benefiting, both from getting a step increase and from getting the investment in that teacher's salary scale, right? So I think option F was really addressing what your concern was, which is about the employees that used to have the ability to get to the top step 23, but now don't, right? When we look at our teachers that are lower on the salary scale, they're benefiting tremendously from higher career earnings earlier in their life.
Very much agree.
So they'll have that higher pay all those years.
Right.
So I really do think option F is really kind of getting at what you're saying, in that for those teachers that are on the BA lanes, right, in FY 17, step 15 and above, right, they would be able to step through the top of the new scale, so still benefiting from the investments we're making in those scales. And then we would temporarily add those shadow steps to let them go to step 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23, and that's option E, excuse me, I gave you the wrong letter, but it's option E, I believe, is exactly what you're talking about.
Option E, not F.
Option E.
That's the sunset step, but...
Correct, so that would take an employee who's currently now, say, on step 18, right?
Yeah, no, I understand that piece of it, although what I heard was, it's going to be significant cost to us, and at one point, I heard that it's just going from one year to the next would be significant, but we've got, on the one hand, the desire to do some sort of bonus for employees. So for Ms. Kofax, if you're taking notes, I believe we need to do a 1% bonus. I don't like a $1,000 thing, I think that you're talking about, you know, people's healthcare costs or other, you know, benefits, if those go up, they're tied to their salary. So I think a 1% MSA for those who didn't qualify for a step increase for next year is appropriate.
So in that case, what you could do is for the employees that are on a hold step or longevity, right, you could give them that 1% bonus. Then you could follow option E and say for the teachers impacted by grandfathering on the bachelor's degree lanes, right, for any of those employees, again, you know, step 15 and higher, they would still have the availability after they got through the top of the new scale to still have those previous steps, you know, 20, 21, 22, 23.
I understand that, although I haven't heard conversation about the bachelor plus 30, where they were being, according to this chart, they could go as high as step 29. So we'd be taking that away from teachers.
No, no, that's included in this as well, we gave them all of the steps that were on the 2017 scale.
That were on the FY 17.
Correct, so you're right, there were 29 on the BA plus 30 lane.
So everybody needs to understand, there are some teachers where we would still honor up through step 29. So what isn't then clear is the chart that I was referencing earlier that you gave us, where we could look at the region, and this is why, Dr. Brabran, I'm not even necessarily saying we should just, okay, go with option E and there you have it, because I'm more comfortable saying to our employees, we're going to honor you for this next year like nothing changed, and then we have to figure this out. We have to analyze this chart and figure this out, what makes $77,000 the magic cut point for a bachelor's degree when I'm looking at Loudon and I'm looking at Prince William and saying, what's that going to do to us for people who decide, I don't want to pay for a master's degree, but if I go over there, I don't need a master's degree, my earnings potential will be higher? Do we know the answer to that?
So your career earnings, we use the same market that we use for all the other lanes, which were, and we have the data somewhere in that teacher's salary scale information that we provided, all the various different jurisdictions we used in the initial compensation study, that's who we compared our market to. And if you look at Loudon and FCPS, you're correct, top of their salary is higher, but there are other districts, just like Arlington, that are much lower, and it takes our teachers on the bachelor's line, if you start with us, to get to that $77,000 much earlier, meaning they have that rapid career earnings. If you look at the salaries comparison on each of the steps, you'll see that FCPS teachers are earning a lot more at the beginning of their career.
Well, but I'm looking at step 23 for Fairfax County, and when you go step 23 over in Loudon and Prince William, you're earning $90,000.
So again, we're going to grandfather those folks if the board approves option E. The way the scale is designed, you have to look at the entire scale and the career earnings.
Yeah, I am, but Ms. Quinn, that's what I'm concerned about, is that even if you look at where an employee for Fairfax County is going to be earning, I mean, if you look at our scale against Prince William all the way through, you're going to be making the same, if not more, all the way through on Prince William.
Again, we took the market average because that was our approach. We agree with you, when you compare it just to one jurisdiction, you could compare...
Two, the largest ones that we have to compete for. I mean, that's the bottom line, Arlington is smaller, Alexandria City is smaller, so people commuting to go to PG County, Montgomery County, they will make trade-offs with, based on the commutes and what that's going to be. But if you live in Western Fairfax, crossing over the border to teach in Loudon is not going to be a bad commute. And if you live over on the south side where Ms. Schultz is, crossing into Prince William's is not going to be that bad. So we will have a bleed-off effect. But I think where my concern, Dr. Brabran, is that everything Ms. Quinn is saying is compelling, but our employees don't understand this, they haven't seen the broader calculations in being able to say, look, when we calculate your earnings and we add in the ERFC, this is why you want to stay with us? And so my worry is, we don't have enough time in this work session to make sure that we're making the right decision. Because of what happened with the substitute teacher pay rate, which, again, I appreciate that you guys took the average of the region, but we don't necessarily compete with Manassas City Schools and all the ones that get treated as a one-to-one. So I'm just very worried, we made a mistake on the substitute teacher pay rate, and that was a tiny mistake. This one, we've now heard, it could be us making an 80 to a 90 million dollar decision in less than two weeks. That's not prudent. So, you know, I appreciate you gave us an option E with the step sunset, but that has an 80 to a million dollar, 80 to 90 million dollar price tag. So would we be better off?
Just a moment, Dr. Brabran would like to speak to one of your comments.
Thank you.
Now, that's a great nugget. It's week two. I thought, the longer I listen, the more I hear certain board members calling into question the entire budget process around salary for staff. That's a huge, that's a huge one. We're not going to get that done in a work session. If you all feel as a board that the fundamental process for developing this budget around employee compensation is a flawed model, then I urge you to pick a one-year solution and give me a year to figure out what's what. If you feel the model you created around compensation for career earnings, which is a key design in this, career earnings and market average is the right design, then you need to pick one of these tweaks or some combination. then you need to pick one of these tweaks or some combination thereof. That's what I'd say to you. If you believe the whole process has been flawed from the start, then pick a one-year fix and give me a one-year to work with staff on a new model. If you feel the overall approach to 95 to 100% of total compensation and market average of all jurisdictions is the right model, and yes, we've left a few of our folks behind, and we need to make a tweak for that, then pick one of these six. That's my advice about an hour and 15 minutes in. I would say one of the issues in just listening, contracts. I mean, coming from where I've come, my head would be rolling if we didn't have contracts out to employees. I mean, we are late, late in the game on this. So I think we've got to be deciding, what kind of decision does the board want to make? Short-term or long-term to help drive the discussion? And then just knowing that we're really running out of time. We've got to make a decision here soon.
So I'll just wrap up, Ms. Kofax. Just to clarify to staff, I don't think your process was entirely flawed. I don't want to communicate that. I do have concerns that I think there wasn't clear dialogue and understanding between what the board thought we were doing when we passed the FY18 budget and what staff thought they had developed. And then when I've talked to the teacher associations, again, information has to come in context. And what's been shared with me is, when they were shown the new salary scales, they weren't looking in context to, this is what it was. It was just, here's what we've drafted going forward. And I'm not taking it face value. I haven't had a chance to have an intimate conversation with staff. What I will say is, we're not in a good place. So I think being able to grandfather our FY17 scale into FY18 for our bachelor lanes, who are, you know, step 19 to 23, just the ones who are finding themselves like we basically took something away from them. And maybe you guys can help me figure out what that looks like. I just, I'm not comfortable making a permanent change. And I'm also not comfortable going with whole-scale option E. That sets expectations. And the final thing I want to just clarify is, the charts we've been given, Dr. Bravran, say, salary, because it's a step for the salary scale, but that's not total compensation. So when our employees see that, and what I was just quoting about what you can earn in Prince William and Prince Loudon County, but that's actually not total compensation. So you layer on our benefits and our ERFC, and those will look higher on an annual basis, right? But unfortunately, that's not what we have. So when we have pieces of data in isolation, it gives the employees the wrong impression. And we have state senators and state delegates on Facebook still accusing us of not investing in teacher salaries and being below the market. You guys know some of them. They're over in your neck of the woods. And that's...
That's false information.
Of course it is. But the problem is, when we have a chart like that in isolation, people just look at the salary chart and say, I'm being undercompensated. We've got to correct that, but you can't do it if we don't have a chart. I don't have a chart from staff that says, if you're in career, you know, year 19 of your career, not the step, but the year career, you're earning this annually when you add in all the other benefits and stuff. If we don't get that, we can't correct the narrative. So again, I don't want staff to think that I think your entire model is flawed, but I think we've got some problems. And I don't want to vote on something in two weeks. Other than, I told you, do the 1% bonus would be my recommendation. And we've got to figure out how to grandfather in everybody this year till we figure it out.
The nugget of that is, total compensation plus retirement that includes VRS and ERFC, nobody, nobody comes close to Fairfax County Public Schools. So, and Virginia. I don't, we'd have to run the numbers for Maryland. So I think, like I said, just to summarize for the board, if you have a fundamental problem with the budget process around employee compensation, I would ask you to go for a one-year fix before you make an 80, 90 million dollar decision over the next 10 years. If you feel very good about the budget process, then it's really about picking one combination of the six options, either one of the six or some blend of the two. Thank you.
So Megan, you would be advocating for D1, which would be a one-year restoration of the step, and then one would give a 1% bonus to those on longevity or hold.
I believe that captures what I wanted. I would, you know, I want to look, this is an interesting chart. But yes, I think that's going to get me closest to where I think we should go and then build on it for next year.
All right, Mr. McElveen, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I think it was actually a very good compensation study until we hit this mess. And it has truly been a mess. And I think no one on the board foresaw what was going to happen here. And I think that's our problem, that's staff's problem. But I do know if I were a member of our staff that was affected by this, I would certainly be back there holding signs and raising hell. So I do think the biggest problem with this is that it contradicts our strategic plan that says we want to foster a caring culture. This is not portraying a caring culture. Now, certainly, we can fix that, and I hope we do. I think what I see up there, option E is the most intriguing. I think other good points have been raised, but I want to see how this develops over time. I do think we're coming to some sort of consensus, which is good. I don't think a bonus is sufficient to recoup for these employees what's been done to them.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you very much. I am glad I followed you, Ryan, because I think you did raise some of the thoughts I was having, which is that I do think that the compensation study was an excellent starting point, and I think that we were focused on the right things. However, we never really got down to the nitty-gritty details of this level in total compensation, as well as addressing the total compensation. And I do think that we do need to change the dialogue about total compensation versus just salary. Having said that, I believe we need to look towards a hybrid model because you, similar to our discussion with ERFC, we've set expectations and we've set expectations in our employee base of what they were seeing. I have some questions regarding those people that are on the 19 today. Did they get any of the infusion of cash last year that we made into the system? And was it, so did it accelerate them above what they would have done previously on their? So I think what, for discussion purposes and part of the transparency is that it would be helpful to have a chart that showed the old salary lane and progressions and what the expectation at the end of year, end of professional career earnings was going to be, and then the current one, as it affects these people, the 461. Because that just kind of shows whether, if you go back two years ago when we first started infusing, putting money into the salaries, how did that, what was the impact of those investments on these people? And then, but I am more likely to look at a step sunset over time for those people that, for planning purposes. You know, when you get to 19, BA plus 19, you really are talking about, and it's probably more like BA plus 15, you're starting to think about your retirement. And if you started planning for your retirement the past couple of years and you started running your numbers, which I know people do, they want to see, you know, what their long-term impact is for their retirement. You talked about an 80 to 90 million dollar impact over the 11 years. And that's another thing to kind of clarify of where, you know, you see it 80 to 90 over 11 years, but then what happens to the drop-off? Those type of sensitivity tests in financial models, I think, are important. But my hybrid approach would be to give a bonus for those that are on the longevity and hold and then restore the step for those that are in grandfathered mode for this year and have, kind of building on Dr. Bravran's suggestion of then give us some time, come back to us and say whether it has to go beyond that one year. So give us a plan.
I just want to make certain I'm understanding. So you're saying like an option D-ish? D-ish, D1, D1 maybe again. Okay. All right.
Actually, it's D slash.
Yeah, that's, right, right. Okay. All right, all right. Right, 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 right. All right, Ms. Strauss.
Okay, just so that I understand sort of the implications of what everyone is suggesting. We have a placeholder in the current budget of 3.3 million. Okay, if there was a D-ish plan, because in the D one-year step sunset, there's 1.1 for the bonus.
Correct. So if we went with item D, we would need to add another .2 million to the budget, and that's it. So it would just reduce that funding we're setting aside for year-end by that .2 as we added it to this option.
And that would...
And in that case, right, it would provide that one-year step, as Karen Corbett Sanders just said, right? And then you could provide either that 1% bonus or $1,000 bonus to your people that are currently on longevity or hold step.
So that would, that would increase the placeholder by .2?
Correct.
All right. It would not basically destroy the entire budget process. We would then be able to go back and take a look at this. One other long-term question, because in fact, we did a salary study to try to adjust everything to make sure that we are within 95 to 105% of the market, which is important, and we've not finished it. And so then, as we go through all of this, because we intend to make adjustments in other scales as well, if we end up, if we end up, in essence, making no adjustment rather than to new hires, if that becomes the trend, that could potentially have an impact on all the rest of the market scale study. And I guess that's part of the difficulty, as to what is the cost adjustment over time? Do we ever, are we ever able to increase salaries where we know we have weaknesses? Or is it just always increasing salaries, period? And I mean, that's the cautionary tale. Right. Okay, I'm continuing to listen. Thank you.
Mr. Mann.
Oh, thank you. I am about 1% bonus for the longevity and hold. But before I even go there, let me ask you this question first. When you're costing out for options D, E, and F, were you including instructional assistance as well?
Yes, we will include instructional assistance. Their cost should be small, the costs that we've reflected on the slide.
That's included in those numbers already, in D, E, F?
Yes, for instructional assistance, I believe the cost was minimal, and it's not adjusting these numbers, but they were included in all of our planning.
Okay, okay. For bonus-wise, that 1%, that's where I am for a longevity and hold. For the step restoration-wise, I am somewhere around D or I could go even further than D, but not more than E is where I am. But that should include not just the teachers, but also instructional assistants. But hopefully with a, at least for the first year, at least for the first year, if I go beyond D, at least for the first year cost, if we give bonus of a 1% and just a $1,000, that seems to be a more expensive option. If we use a 1%, I hope that the overall cost does not exceed, at least for the first year, $3.3 million.
It would not. We would actually save .1. We have 3.3 in the budget as a placeholder right now.
Right. Because I saw for the option, option A, I saw 2.5 versus 3.3 is C-2, which was the most expensive model for the bonus options.
Correct. So if the board were to elect option D and then go with a 1% bonus for our other employees, there would be savings of .1.
So I could persuade it otherwise, but I'm willing to give a new superintendent an opportunity to take a look at what he has done and see whether he sees any area of major improvement the way we did our market compensation study. I know there's extra work on the part of, you know, Dr. Bravran, but as a new superintendent, that's something he may actually enjoy doing.
Oh, he signed up for this job, so he might as well. He probably enjoys it. I have three go-backs. We are, I will ask my three go-backs to be very, very succinct. I will speak my opinions at this point and just make a couple of comments.
Ms. Diana Kofax, can I just interrupt? Just in terms of timing, we are okay to go until about 1:15, 1:20. So we will go into closed. We're waiting for one of our colleagues to get here for that, so we're fine.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. So we have a little bit more time, because I was going by the schedule, which is at 1:00. Thank you for clarifying, Madam Chair. So, you know, the budget is a complex thing, and we know, we spent a lot of time, Dr. Bravran, I think you were here in the days when we were passing the budget and I made my comments. We had over 27 meetings, many work sessions, including on the budget. So this, we did not take it lightly. That did not include sessions on ERFC, and that did not include previous year's comments on the compensation study. So we have spent a tremendous amount of time. One of our problems, I will say, to the budget process, one of the flaws, is that we have been chronically underfunded by both state and local funding bodies for the entire time I have been on the board. So we are trying to, you know, have the same pie with more people, with greater needs, you know, with greater competition amongst our surrounding jurisdictions. So all of those things, so the people who are posting on social media, I would love to talk to them about the due diligence that we did have. Does it make everyone happy where we are? No. I really appreciate staff taking the time to hear from the teachers who are out there. Once we kind of saw, we all saw that line. It was flat. We went through many. We saw it. Maybe we didn't ask enough questions or really look at it the way we should have. But I really appreciate the options that you've set out there because, and that's what I really appreciate about our staff. They take a problem that's before them, and they often do come times, come to solutions very quickly, as we are being forced to do now at the end of the year in order to get our contracts, in order to get everything moving by the end of July. So I am very much with my colleagues who talked about having the 1% for the longevity and hold. I was really going with option E until I heard Dr. Bravran talk about perhaps doing a one-year study rather than committing ourselves to multiple years and doing option D and then allowing a revisit to this. I think we have to be also very mindful, and I know many of my colleagues advocated for this. The compensation study was on compensation, but it didn't include compensation and benefits. And we, as Dr. Bravran said, we are some, one of the best when it comes to Virginia with that. So I think, you know, while we looked at it in isolation, I think we continually need to be mindful of the compensation and benefits package which we have. So with that, my three go-backs right now are Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans, and Ms. McLaughlin.
So I didn't have the benefit of Dr. Bravran's insight, and maybe you needed to hear us a little bit to start to formulate what the lay of the land is. to hear us a little bit to start to formulate what the lay of the land is. I, I feel like I'm trying to synthesize a little bit with Ms. Polczek was saying, what Ms. Darnett-Kofax is saying, and the frustration of Ms. McLaughlin that I certainly felt during compensation study. On the one hand, we did a compensation study. On the other hand, Dr. Braybrand, the clarity of your single statement that we are unparalleled in total compensation in Virginia, that simple of a statement was never made during the entire process. And, and for that, I don't think the compensation study was effective. And I do think it left us frustrated. And I do think that we're exactly where we are right now because there was a lack of clarity on communicating what we were doing and reviewing the salary scales in context with the total data. I feel like I am a broken record. You have to have data, not for data's sake, but data in context to understand the full picture. And I think frankly, we were tripping over ourselves and, and, and the frustration that you feel isn't directed at you. It is, it is because of the situation in which we find ourselves, in which we found ourselves last year on substitute pay. And Ms. McLaughlin is exactly right. I am frustrated. This is not the time, because this is not the, the subject, but for the love of Pete, if I can't have my teachers get a qualified teacher into the classroom so they can go do professional development, or collaborative teams, or whatever else they need to do, getting dragged for the umpteenth time to an IEP meeting, which I'm going to hopefully work with Ms. Johnson, we've already been communicating with as an ACSD charge. Look, the total compensation is the issue. Unfortunately, it wasn't the target of communication. And this is where we, we don't effectively use board time and staff time when we have mega issues like this and bring the people to the table so everybody understands proactively what we're trying to do. So because I didn't have the benefit of your, you know, taking the lay of the land, I would, and now I do advocate for the well-being of the employee force, for the well-being of the board, for the well-being of improving dialogue with employees. I do think it's a good idea to do a one-year solution. I know it isn't helpful for the planning purposes for the people who are later in their careers, but I actually think that frankly, you may get more opportunity to be vested with your communication with us if, if we bring you back to the table over the course of the next year. And so, so I, I would advocate, I, I do think a 1% rather than a 1,000. I don't like the random 1,000 because the 1% could be vastly different depending upon who the employee is. I do want to include instructional assistance. Frankly, we have instructional assistance who have master's degrees. And, you know, they're, they're, you know, they help make, you know, some of the most difficult classrooms run. So I'm, I'm in favor for the 1% for hold and longevity. I, I would like to see a solution that involves a long-term sunset that basically is a option of basically like an E-plus. But I think it's also fair to Dr. Braybrand, who's walking into this, to potentially help us do a better job communicating with the employee base. So that's going to be my advocacy. Here she comes back. I was just, like, Mr. Darnett-Kofax, silly. That's okay. So I'm looking at Ms. Darnett-Kofax for your, for your record, taking a 1% for hold and longevity, a one-year solution now to allow Dr. Braybrand the latitude to look at the total compensation communication issue and bring employees back to the table and, and help the board with its communications and evaluate what potential other options exist with a, like a, you know, E compromise, a E-plus, or a D, D-plus-E, something like that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Evans.
So I'm going to also go to Dr. Braybrand's comment and question. And I do think that our compensation study overall sent us into the right direction. I think it was clear that our mid-career salaries were under where they needed to be. And, and we made the decision to make a significant investment in those mid-career salaries. So I think that that, I, I continue to believe that that was something that we had to do for the long term. So in answer to your first question, I do believe that our, our overall decisions on this were the right ones. I also think that we need to, to do something to fix the BA scales. And, and thank you for all of you who came out today to advocate and who brought good information to the, the board and focused our attention on this issue. I, having listened to people and looking again at this, I think my preference would be if we could turn it around between now and July 27th, my preference would be to find the fix now. If we can't do it, if we just don't have time, then I, I could consider doing the one-year and, and revisiting it. Where I'm coming down is probably, it's either a hybrid of, of E or it's a D, you know, with D and E, some combination of that. I think we're, I would like to phase in what we're doing, but, but more speedily, I think is where I'm heading with this. I think we need to phase it in. We probably need to get people over, over the transition period with some, some bonuses as needed. But, so I think someplace in, where I'm coming down on, and I'm sorry, it's, you know, this is a number seven or eight or nine option, but something between D and E as a, as a permanent solution to phase it in, but phase it in more quickly than... For, for those who are not affected or don't benefit from, from what we do, I, I would want to see a bonus as well. Oh, it, I'm, you know, the 1% seems reasonable to me for those...
For hold and longevity.
Right, yeah, yes.
Okay, all right. You seem to be coming to some consensus around that. Ms. McLaughlin.
So just going forward, because I, I feel that part of why we're sitting here today is that there wasn't clarity from the board to staff on what our expectations were when we were finalizing the FY18 budget. And so going forward, leaving this work session, I'd like to note that we've done a better job as a board with some clarity. So a lot of conversation's been around total compensation charts. So right now, a public document we have is just the bachelor step salary scales. So anyone looking at that's going to make judgments, and it, we don't look good in that one. And to the audience in the room and anybody watches it, I hope you know when I say that, it's not about looking good, it's about effectively communicating what, all the data in context, as, as my colleague, Ms. Schultz, said. I think all of us believe in that. It's how we execute on it. And to our teacher associations, they also want to be part of this dialogue in representing large portions of our employee groups. And so we're going to really need to bring them in. So, so my request is we create total compensation charts on step one, all the way to wherever that step ends in, in our teacher careers for bachelor and masters and PhD. We need those charts so everyone can see them and see that, yes, a salary chart by itself looks different from a total compensation earnings. In terms of that compensation study at a very macro level, yes, it brought some meaningful information, but it's always about how we execute things. And I used to gently beg Dr. Garza, please keep talking about total compensation, because she would just oftentimes keep us going towards salary, salary, salary. And then things like ERFC and total benefits and the wealth that brings to employees' livability every single year was getting lost. And so we've got to, you know, make sure that is front and center in our dialogue. So our employees understand everything comes at a cost. The reaction we had to just change ERFC had everybody saying, that's precious, don't touch it. I don't think people disagreed with it. But ERFC is an additional cost to this system that Arlington doesn't have. And that's why Arlington can go total salary and look like they do. So we've got to have, I think, the broader communication and conversation with our employees and what matters to them. So just to be clear, I came into this work session with, we needed to grandfather and we need to honor employees for what we told them when they were in the system. I do think that we will find ourselves in a better situation going with Dr. Braybrand's suggestion, which is let's grandfather everybody in for next year. But I would ask that option D, if that's where we end up going, where it says one-year step sunset, I think it needs to say with additional review. Because if I were an employee, I would see option D and say, so they threw us a bone and gave us a one-year, you know, sunset, and then you're still going to, you know, turn your backs on us the, the year after that? So, yeah, well, I, well, I don't know, I don't know what has to be the follow-on. I think we, I would ask our chair and vice chair of the budget, while you're still finishing out your next two weeks, you may want to relabel that one and consult with Dr. Braybrand. But if you let that label go out there like that, the board and the system is going to still be vilified as all we did was just give them a one-year bone. And I don't think that's going to help us very well. And then finally, no one talked about substitute teacher pay. Staff created a whole budget presentation for FY18, and we punted on it. And, and we said we weren't ready to do that yet, so we didn't include it in FY18, but we said we'd look at it at year-end. And so can, maybe, Ms. Michael, if you wouldn't mind, just explain, since I was told now we're okay on time, where, where as staff, do you understand where we are? Are we just looking at FY18, having the same exact substitute pay rate that we had for FY17? Has anything improved? And if not, then I think this board, we better put our heads together. And I'm happy to craft a motion for the 27th, but I don't think we can keep status quo from what we had in FY17 on substitute pay.
Sure. Ms. McLaughlin's right. We made that presentation on April 20th. So if any of the board members want to relook at that presentation, it's in Board Docs from April 20th. And at that time, it was said that this would have to be considered at a later date. There were some suggestions to look at policies around leave, which we also knew was feeding into that. So our current work on that right now is that over the next year, we are going to look at our regulations and policies around leave and everything that goes into that. But in terms of the actual compensation rate for substitutes, right now, we are planning to keep the same rates for our subs for this next school year as we do that work.
Thank you, Dr. Ramey, because actually you, you brought in another component to our substitute costs. So, Dr. Braybrand, when you look at our substitute cost line item, even in the time that you've been gone in Lynchburg, I think you'll be surprised. I mean, it's a, it's a significant cost driver for us. And we've done some things that I think contribute to that. But at minimum, I, I guess I would say to everybody, since Dr. Ramey said, there's one thing like the leave policy that takes some time to look at, but your, your rate of pay for your substitutes, that, you know, that's something where I, I will, on the one hand, recognize, Dr. Braybrand, in the end, you're the head of operations. So if you and hear from all your principals, they think they can limp along, but I felt like what I heard was, please find a solution for FY18. And I think keeping a status quo won't be it on substitute pay rate.
Oh, Dr. Braybrand.
If I could say, and I'm not making a prediction, but I will say in my five years in Lynchburg, I used the first quarter readjustment time to fund priorities that became clear to me after talking with stakeholders. And this could be a topic, depending on what, what I was defined. Subcosts are a huge piece of every school system's budget, and we've really got to peel the onion back and see what's going on.
So, Dr. Braybrand, I appreciate that, but I'm going to have with staff who were here from this last year, what exactly did Dr. Garza promise us? First quarter review, we would look at what was happening with our substitute pay experience. That didn't happen. And now we are, we've gone through four quarters. So if staff haven't looked at what happened in four quarters, let alone one, I, I mean, I, again, I, we've got a lot on our plate in the next two weeks. So if everybody says there's just so much we can cover, but I will publicly beg you, by first quarter review, we have better have some substantive data on what the principals are telling us is happening with substitute pay. And how hard is it to get quality subs because of what we've done? And I just don't want to see it delayed another time. Mr. Ramey, or Dr. Ramey, you look puzzled. So did I say something to puzzle you?
I was just trying to think through what you, what you said you were looking for and how we would try to, try to capture that. And from a systems approach, whether it being just anecdotal. So sorry, you saw my, you saw the wheels in my head spinning.
Right. So, so I guess I, it was my understanding that we know how many requests for substitutes come in. And then we have our principals who say, this is how many substitutes I was actually able to use. And I had to use my internal staff in the building to fill X% of my substitute requests. They could tell you, I had to fill 20 of them 5% internally inside my building. Maybe that's the way we capture it.
What I'd love to do is to be able to meet with, it's, in my second week, I have meetings planned with Chase and every one of the leadership team members. They have five to six questions they have to answer about key issues. And if it's not on there, it will be now. Let me just take a look at it and see, we can get to the bottom of it. Overall, this is what I want to tell everybody today, including folks back here. We're going to make decisions. I want to bring you decisions, and I want to bring them in a timely fashion. And the one-pager is one weekend. We're going to bring ways to make it as concise as possible and then make a decision. And I think the more we can do that as a team with the school board and superintendent, the more folks will have faith in the process and that something's being done. Now, every decision, is everybody going to like every decision? It's, it's rare. But if, if there's a defined process for decision-making that people can understand, and I did walk over to say, hey, did, did you talk to the superintendent and associations around this particular issue? And the answer was no. Well, that's going to be a thing that I am going to do. And I think if people have that, we're going to be in a better place with, with decisions, whether it's around compensation or subrates. Yes. So thank you.
All right, colleagues. Thank you. I think we're going to make our 1:15 timeframe. I, I don't think I really need to see a show of hands. I think we have, basically, our opinions are mostly in a bonus for 1% longevity and hold and a combination somewhere between D and E leaning, those of us who are leaning toward D, D, D2, or D1, D-ish, whatever we call, D1, okay. And Ms., Ms. Michael, why don't you articulate that for all of us to...
Actually, could I ask you, Ms. Darnett-Kofax, could you take a sense of the board of who's wanting to go for change versus for a one-year fix?
Okay, let, let me allow Ms. Michael to speak to what D1 looks like first.
So for our employees that are at a hold step or longevity, the maximum salary, they would receive a 1% bonus. And then for our employees that are impacted by grandfathering as a result of implementing the new salary scales, and we would follow option D, which is we would provide them with the ability to step to the step value that was on the FY17 scale. And then we would step back and review a plan moving forward.
All right. So that's D1. How many are in favor of that option right now? Yes, combined with a one-year review with, from Dr. Braybrand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's the majority of the board. Other people, I, I'd just like to, if you don't need, want to raise your hand, or people more, the, the two abstentions, option E, is that what you're looking toward, a, a longer? E-ish. Okay, can you just explain that just one more time?
Again, if we can do it in the, in the next 10 days, and that's, that's a, if we can't, then, then I would go with the, you know, the D-ish. But my, my preference would be to basically do an option E, but, but faster.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Rackley, and then Mr. Mann.
Yeah, I mean, very briefly, my, my goal would be to wrap this up as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Mann.
And I'm not going to disagree with feelings expressed by both Ms. Evans and Ms. McLaughlin, that we've spent a lot of time on this issue. And wrapping it over on this one sooner than later would be my preference too. would be my preference too. However, I just want to point out that even though seven of us probably, seven of us supported something to be the main mode, become part of the main motion for the next meeting, that doesn't mean we have to actually support that.
Correct, this was a straw man. And I think, you know, Dr. Braybrand, if you have anything you're going to add to us or for us, or staff will be willing to look at that. And Ms. Palczek, you have a comment?
Yes, just to add to that, well, I would have preferred an option E. While I appreciate that we want to review it for a year, I also appreciate, I don't want this to take many more years. So my preference would be that we at least do this for next year, but that we have the long-term plan.
Ironed out for certain.
Just one more vote, that it's not a year-by-year case.
For certain. All right, thank you all, this work session is done. And Janie, do you have to read something?
Well, we're waiting for Ms. Hines, and it appears as though she is delayed, so I guess we will have lunch. And.
Madam Chair, could you, couldn't you still read the motion and go into the exact session, close the meeting, and then we have a lunch in there?
Okay, all right, we can try this. Oh, here she comes, Ms. Hines. Ms. Hines?
Go ahead.
Okay, the board will now make a motion to enter closed meeting regarding specific public officers and employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and 2, specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia, specifically the performance of specific public employ, officers and employees is their motion. Moved by Mr. Moon, seconded by Mr. McLaughlin. All those in favor? All right, we are in closed session. Thank you.